Hello, everyone. This is Commissioner Tobias. I am running a bit late, but I am on my way. Does this, is this okay for me to be on digital?
Okay, maybe it's not picking up. Okay, thanks, Commissioner Tobias. We will, you go ahead and be there and if you arrive, then we'll just hope that you're there.
Yes, sorry, I'll be there soon.
Okay, great. Drive safe. Okay, welcome everybody to tonight's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. It's seven, just after seven PM, and our meeting is called to order. And I will call the role, and since we know he's here and I don't want to interrupt him driving anymore, I'll say Commissioner Vice Chair Tobias is present.
Present.
And I'll go like you still rest. Okay, Commissioner Edwards, present. Commissioner Kirk Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Schumacher. Commissioner Staff.
Present.
Great, and me, Commissioner Robbins. Okay, we do have a forum, so we'll be moving along. Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any commissioners' reports? Go to managers' reports, since Brad's here.
Just to let everybody know that we're online for the open house next Wednesday here at seven to nine o'clock. It's a hybrid, so open person and online. We're getting pretty positive response from the people we've done outreach for. Erica was out visiting each business in Tomwater personally, handing out flyers. But we're quite excited, actually.
You said at City Hall?
Here in the fire training room.
The fire training room. Any other remarks? Any general public comment? We'll be having some opportunities for a public hearing on our next item, but any general public comment? Person here from the Jolt News. Any general remarks? This would be the time to do it. If you could state your name, affiliation, that'd be great. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm just here to observe. Thank you.
Great, thanks for being here. All right. Let's go into our public hearing. And I want to go through the, there's one more cheat sheet process. So let's, I'll go through the process for the public hearing and then we'll launch into it. So when we get into, when I've called the public hearings together, we will, I'll explain that our, I'll go ahead and say it now, our Planning Commission's role is an advisory body to the city council. We're not a decision-making body, but rather give advice to the council. Our purpose for our hearing tonight is to hear about Resolution Number R 2024-001, to take public testimony on that and potentially take a vote to forward a recommendation to the city council for the resolution. So that's our purpose of the public hearing tonight. For our procedure, when I open the public hearing, we'll hear from staff on our topic. Then we'll get a chance for the commission members to ask questions of staff. Then we'll take public testimony, if any, on the subject of the hearing itself. And then when I've closed the public hearing after that, we can, we can take any further questions that we might, we might have. If there are any speakers wishing to speak on our topic tonight, we ask that you state your name and address when you introduce yourself and that you limit your remarks to just the topic at hand and just for, say, three minutes or so. If there's more than one speaker, we will try to limit any repetitive comments. And I don't think we'll have a large number of speakers. We don't see them online or here in the room, so I don't think that's likely to happen just now. But if there are, we can ask one person to represent the organization or group. And Vice Chair will have the, have the authority to interrupt any of the behaviors. So again, our subject before the Planning Commission for our public hearing is Resolution Number R 2024-001. And the public hearing is formally now occurring. So Staff, please go on.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we are going to talk about the Hazard Mitigation Plan, City of Tomwater Annex, the 2024. This is the fourth version. Excuse me. This is the fourth edition of the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Tomwater, and it outlines strategies to reduce the risk of the most destructive natural hazards, such as floods, earthquakes, wilds, and wildfires that threaten the area. The plan's goals, policies, and actions, if implemented, will minimize losses and protect the people and community assets from future disasters. To manage risks, contain costs, and promote sustainable communities, the federal government enacted the Hazard Mitigation Planning requirements for states, tribes, and local governments in the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Local governments must adopt a federally approved hazard mitigation plan to apply for and receive federal hazard mitigation assistance funding. The plan's goals, policies, and actions, if implemented, will reduce losses and protect our assets from disasters. And the strategies include regional actions to improve multi-agency coordination, build mitigation capabilities, and strengthen resiliency across the city. In addition, each plan participant, the city annex, for example, will produce a specific plan that prioritizes actions to minimize losses within the individual jurisdiction. So there's a regional plan for Thurston County, and then within that, we are a, an annex for the City of Tomwater. Hazard mitigation plans must demonstrate that a community's proposed mitigation measures are based on sound planning process that accounts for the risk and capabilities of the individual jurisdiction. Local governments must conduct a planning process that satisfies federal requirements to receive FEMA plan approval. Our plan must be updated every five years. The city is susceptible to hazards. We are mapped with earthquakes, flooding, landslides, severe weather, and wildfires. And central to the city annex are its recommended projects, programs, and activities that the planning partners within the city implemented to provide long-term sustained benefits that will reduce losses from the impacts of hazards that are identified in the plan. They're also known as initiatives. We have 20 initiatives within the plan, and they are categorized by different types. We have public outreach and information, planned coordination and implementation, which is working with other jurisdictions, data collecting and mapping, which would be our GIS mapping, our City of Tomwater mapping, geodata mapping, where we look for critical area or like landslide hazard areas. We have our development regulations, which are in our Tomwater Municipal Code updates, such as the Wildland Urban Interface for wildfires. We also have our Critical Areas Ordinance that designates certain setbacks from critical areas and mitigates potential impacts from hazards. We also have hazard preparedness, so things we are doing preemptively prior to a hazard happening. Hazard damage reduction, reducing the amount of damage to city assets such as infrastructure, utilities, and then critical facilities and replacement retrofit, so upgrading our utilities, putting utilities underground instead of above ground where they're susceptible to severe weather, hazard storms. So we have one, one initiative type, at least one, in the plan. This is a sample mitigation initiative. It's really small here, but this, right here in the blue identifies the initiative identification. So what type it was, what the hazard is, and then a benefit review cost review score. And then it also has the title. We have a status, whether it was new, modified, or removed, or ongoing. From previous plans, if it's still existing from the previous plan, so the status of the initiative. And then the hazard addressed, it kind of spells it out here instead of in the title of the initiative. And then it goes into the background and need. And then relationship plan goals, implementation details, and the progress towards the initiative's implementation. With this plan, there is a big push for actually tracking our mitigation initiative statuses. It's also going to be adopted into a lot of our work plans, which I'll go over later in the presentation. But also, it, it defines a lead in our initiative. So which department lead will be responsible, or what work plan, what department work plan the initiative came from. So that will help us with tracking the initiatives for the next update. So how did staff choose the initiatives? Staff used initiatives from the last update and some of the example plans to choose initiatives. So FEMA has example mitigation ideas, so there's federal mitigation ideas. I also worked with other departments, and we went through their work plans as far as retrofitting utilities. So we have the Capital Facilities Plan. We also have our Comprehensive Plan, our Water System Plan from Water Resources. I also worked with Transportation and Engineering to go through their work plan. And we also worked with the Tomwater Fire Department to come up with initiatives to review the 2016 plans, update those ones if still applicable, remove the initiatives that aren't any longer, no longer applicable, and to come up with new ones. This will also help us track implementation, especially when we're looking at the City of Tomwater Comprehensive Plan Update, our Development Code Update, and our City Work Programs. This is an outline of the plan structure or the table of contents, so how it was organized. We started with a table of contents, a list of tables, the adopting resolution. The plan is a total of 144 pages, but it's broken down into 12 sections. Down here at the middle in the community profile, that's a breakdown of demographics, housing, employment, and income and development activity. Then we have summary and adoption, which summarizes the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and the process that we went through to get to the adoption. The city annex development process also breaks down the Hazard Mitigation Planning Team, the work groups, meetings, stakeholders, public outreach, works cited, and more. It also includes the plan monitoring and maintenance and continued public outreach strategies. Risk assessment is an evaluation of each jurisdiction's hazards. So it's the evaluation of our risk ratings for earthquakes, floods, wildfires, landslides, that will be found in the city risk assessments. And it, the risk assessments identify areas of impact, the extent of the risk, previous incidents, and probability of occurrence, impacts to changes in development, the effects of climate change, and vulnerability. Jurisdictions must have at least one mitigation action for each mapped hazard. That leads us into our mitigation strategy. In this section, you will find an introduction to city mitigation initiatives, the prioritization process, the initiative format, and a sample in the proposed initiatives. The Benefit Cost Review helped, helped us rate and prioritize the initiatives. The Benefit Cost Review also helped with the naming conventions of the initiatives. The city must perform a Benefit Cost Review for each hazard mitigation action or project that it considered for inclusion for the strategies. The City Hazard Mitigation Planning Team evaluated each proposed mitigation project or action, providing a high, medium, or low benefit using the Benefit Review criteria. And that leads us down into the public comments summary. We received one public, one public comment documented on page 96 in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The comment expressed concern with existing development within liquefaction areas and whether or not residents living within the area were notified. This was an already existing development. It's not new development. If it was new development, it would go through the Tomwater Development Review Process in our Community Development Division. So we did respond to that public comment. I know last time we had received, we had received comments about that. We worked with Water Resources and getting back because the comment ended up. But the public comment with the liquefaction areas?
Yeah, we included that in time.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Just a question. Can you define liquefaction and what causes it? Is that like the propensity for low-lying soft lands to turn to flood?
It's essentially, I'd say a peat farm or a sand, if you're building on sand or something like that. Or if you have an earthquake or something that disrupts the actual, how those things actually work together and creates a situation where they can't support the peat that's on top of them, because it's essentially an exerts. That's essentially.
And then we have the Community Capability Assessment. It's a unique set of capabilities and tools that can be leveraged to support hazard mitigation and increase resilience, such as our Capital Facility Plan, Comprehensive Plan, Building and Land Use Codes, et cetera. So this is how we showed our work and showed how we're going to support our initiatives within the plan. And then we have our National Flood Insurance Program Assessment. The plan must describe our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program and how we meet the regulatory requirements. All right, monitoring and maintenance. The city annex has incorporated many of city updates into its initiatives. Staff will frequently review and track the status of the initiatives throughout the Capital Facilities Plan Update, our Tree and Vegetation Code Update, our 2025 Development Code Periodic Update, Washington's Wildland Urban Interface Code Adoption, and the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, and our yearly Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The city annex and regional plan is a climate resiliency subaliment required for the city's Comprehensive Plan Update that will need to be tracked and monitored. So the plan update, we started working on the Hazard Mitigation Plan in February of 2022. The workgroup meetings were facilitated by Thurston Regional Planning Commission. TRPC is the lead on creating the regional plan. The workgroups met monthly, and for almost two years, the workgroup has gone over our risk assessments, new federal update requirements, initiative prioritization, benefit cost reviews, hazard data, and we even worked together for public outreach. The city annex was submitted with the core plan on November 27th. Washington Emergency Management Division started their 30, their 30-day review. Just recently, on January 16th, we received an email from Thurston Regional Planning Commission that Washington, that said that they heard from Washington Emergency Management Division and FEMA had stated that they expect their reviews to be done this week. So that's pretty exciting. Which brings us to our approval and adoption process. So, sorry, I forgot to switch the slide on you guys. This was the plan update, the Hazard Work Group. This is an example of how, how often we met. That's in the plan as well. It's documented within the plan. And then this is the approval process. We are in between here, between Emergency Management Division and FEMA. It was 30 days for the state review and then 40 days for the federal review. After that, we will go start our adoption process, and that's part of tonight's hearing. So tonight's ask, I would like to ask a recommendation to the City Council on Resolution 02024-001 for, to be moved towards the General Government Committee on February 14th, 2024. Move forward, sorry.
This would be the time when commission members, do you have?
Have we ever had occasion where FEMA has actually had to come to Tomwater or work with us on anything pretty good, like to sort of put this into practice as far as hazard mitigation? I'm thinking of, I mean, I don't know if FEMA showed up, but I remember the, the oil leak of some kind that happened at the old brewery that was seeping into the falls there. Was that, that like FEMA response, or that was something?
That was the State Department of Ecology. Because specifically it was a spill.
Okay.
But for example, from this FEMA-related update, we did coordinate, it was the State Office of Ecology, some office that deals with floodplains that led the process for the evaluation. So we, we seem to work more with the state agencies directly.
Something, but I didn't know if we had any like recent or historical examples of having to work with federal disaster. I mean, we're pretty fortunate here. We don't get hurricanes or, you know, it's been a while since the last earthquake, knock on wood.
Yeah, it was the last earthquake.
I guess I have a couple of questions. Hopefully, they're relatively quick. And the, the resolution itself, I remember asking last time about Section 3 and about what happens if we see little or no funding to implement things. Is there any, did you explore any on that? Ability issues, don't commit to, you know, commit funds for that kind of thing?
I do think, after reviewing that, the, that's why we have our capability assessments, and we had to show our work on how we created the initiative through our work plans, through the CFP, through the Water System Plan. It, we just have to have it in our plans. It's not necessary that we actually finish it, because we do have a lot of initiatives that have been ongoing. But we do explain in our initiatives why it is ongoing. We do talk about the needs for funds within those initiatives. FEMA just wants us to show that we have it in process and document where it is within our work plans and just planning for it, that we're actively working on these initiatives.
Yeah, progress towards, say, for example, any improvement or any of that. They won't, like in future, deny us any kind of additional funding.
Isn't. Yeah, correct. Yes, I was gonna say yes.
My next question has to do with kind of that public comment about noticing, notifying people. And maybe, maybe my question is really more about, does this plan talk about any kind of response awareness? Or, or, you know, is it part of the plan to talk about, you know, if there is a disaster, what kind of messaging, what kind of, how to, how to respond?
Like in an event of an emergency, if that were to happen? We did promote at Thurston County Fair, Washington Emergency Management Division has an alert system that you can sign up for. It's a regional alert. We are working with communications with outreach. We do have some outreach initiatives for public outreach. And then also, we are working on a mailing for people within a flood area or areas prone to flooding. There was, but going through and mapping each hazard and notifying, is that what you're asking?
No, more of a, as part of the plan to say, we have a plan for when something occurs, of how we're going to notify people, how we're going to help people, how we're gonna deal with the situation.
We do have, we did partner with the City of Tomwater Fire Department. I know they have plans in case of emergencies. Really, the initiatives were based on city projects or plans within work programs. That's definitely something we can consider, more public outreach, maybe in the event of. We do have a website online on the City of Tomwater's page about our Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is available to the public, and I but that's definitely something we can look into, is maybe promoting more of signing up for the Emergency Management Services and notification in the event of, as far as public outreach goes, maybe more public outreach initiatives in the future.
Or maybe it's just handled by, I don't remember now, which is the emergency?
The regional plan?
County is the lead.
Yeah.
Emergency manager.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right, and I'm not looking to duplicate that, I'm looking, I'm interested to find out, do we acknowledge that there is a plan of action?
The Emergency Management Plan is a separate document. How do we prevent us getting in the situation?
Okay. Okay, great. All right, any other, any other remarks or questions before we go to... Oh, yes, go ahead.
One more question. If they already mentioned it before in regards to the initiatives, some of them may, for lack of a better term, stall for funding or other reasons. Is there a way that we could potentially reach out or have to reach out to get support, to get those unstuck? So if we're working through something identified, hey, we can't move it forward, and it's something to get support from FEMA. Do they have a mechanism perhaps to help us move that forward? Or is that something we just handle internally as the city?
With the initiatives, I think it would be up to the leads on the specific initiative. We are definitely, it's part of our program and our our maintenance plan is to meet more regularly with the different departments, because I worked with Transportation and Engineering, Water Resources, the police, the fire department. We also had Communications with us and Community Development Department. So I think it would be helpful for us to meet more often, to track the progress. And with the Comprehensive Plan update, and there's always grants that the different departments are applying for. So I think it would be more of a matter of checking in with them more often and getting more updates more frequently than every five years. And, yeah. And it's just really, it's really nice that this also complements our Comprehensive Plan update and a lot of the elements that we're working on in the Comprehensive Plan, like the CFP. So that was kind of a goal, like, something I wanted to focus on was, like, initiatives that we're kind of working towards or that are in action that really complement our Hazard Mitigation Plan. But, yeah, that's definitely need to be checked in.
Now I'm gonna open it up for public comments. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on our topic tonight of the resolution in front of us? And again, if you, if there is anybody, please state your name and station and your address. All right, it looks like there's no one present or online wanting to make public comment. Brad or Erica, did you hear from anybody by phone or email or otherwise on our proposed resolution? Then I will close the public hearing portion of this item right now. And we have, does the commission members second their... Action?
We forward Resolution Number R2024-001, Hazard Mitigation Plan, Thurston Region, City of Tomwater Council for consideration.
A second? I would seconding. We moved and seconded to advance our, for approval to City Council, Resolution Number R2024-001, the fourth edition of our hazards mitigation. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Let's go to next order of business, which is Ordinance Number Oh 2023-017, Tomwater Municipal Code 18.38, Flood Plane Overlay.
Me again. Bear with me while I get the presentation on screen. All right, so tonight, we're gonna conduct a work session on Ordinance Number 02023-017, Flood Plane Overlay Amendments. Last time we met, I had briefly introduced the ordinance, talked about the update, and kind of gave you guys some homework to review the ordinance, to review the code. And then we are gonna discuss that further tonight. So, close to 300 towns, cities, counties, tribes, and tribes in the state participate in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. Continued enforcement of the city's floodplain management regulations allows FEMA to make federally-backed flood insurance available to property owners within the city. To participate in the National Flood Insurance Policy, communities are required to adopt and enforce flood hazard reduction regulations that meet minimum federal requirements. In May of 2023, city staff completed a floodplain community assistance visit, also known as the CAV, with the State Department of Ecology to review the city's participation in the NFIP. The CAV determines that Tomwater's Municipal Code 1838, the floodplain overlay should be updated to reflect current federal standards. And then on November 8th, FEMA notified the city of the final determinations for Thurston County, final flood determinations for Thurston County and incorporated areas which included the City of Tomwater. The FEMA flood hazard determinations are considered final, and the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps covering the city will become effective May 8th of 2024. Also, within that letter, we were notified that prior to May 8th of 2024, the effective date of the new flood study and the flood insurance map, the city must amend its existing floodplain regulations to be consistent with the bottle ordinance under the NFIP Endangered Species Act and to maintain its eligibility in the NFIP. Basically, we need to bring our ordinance up to standard before the maps and flood insurance study become effective to maintain our eligibility in the NFIP National Flood Insurance Program. Included in the packet was a staff report, which included the summaries of the fifteen proposed amendments, the code sections that are being amended or added, and the proposed amendment language. We have three new sections being proposed, which is detached accessory structures, excuse me, storage of materials and equipment, and we have a penalties section. So our first code section to be amended was our definitions section. The following slides are going to be a summary of the proposed amendments. The amendments really help with interpretation of floodplain regulations. We added eight new definitions for clarity throughout the ordinance and for regulations. On the slide, we have alteration of water course, area of special flood hazards, flood elevation study, floodplain administrator, flood proofing, highest adjacent grade, mean sea level, and structure. Did we have any comments about the definitions? The next section to be amended is TMC 1838-090, Special Flood Hazard Areas. This section defines what areas are considered special flood hazard areas by referencing the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps. This is, this amendment was to be more consistent with those updated maps and study, and our code must reflect the most current versions. In the existing code, it was just stating the last time FEMA updated the maps and the flood insurance study. So since we have updated maps in the study, our code needs to reflect that. Also, as part of this update, we decided for consistency, starting to use acronyms throughout. We defined the acronyms in the definitions section. So a lot of the sections amendments were updating the acronyms. All right, next section is TMC 1838-100, Flood Hazard Data. This code section amendment is intended to clarify how special flood hazard areas are identified using base flood elevations and flood insurance rate maps. We also clarified the process in instances where the base flood elevation and floodway data hasn't been provided in the FIS firm. Right. So our next section is TMC 1838-130, Flood Plane Development Permit Required. This code section amendment is intended to clarify when and where a floodplain development permit is required. And then we also updated the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps reference within this code section. Then we have Tomwater Municipal Code 1838-140, Flood Plane Development Permit Application. This code section amendment is intended to add new permit application requirements, such as elevation certificate information requirements, elevations related to mean sea level and engineering analysis requirement. There was five new subsections that were also added just to clarify what's required within a floodplain development permit. Then we have Tomwater Municipal Code 1838-180, Records. We updated our acronyms, we clarified information required to be obtained for record, removed passive language, and provided a process for the floodplain administrator to ensure proposed construction will be safe from flooding when that elevation data is not available, and a list of information the floodplain administrator shall obtain and make available to the public. Our next section amendment is TMC 1838-210, Development and Subdivisions. The proposed amendments were to clarify which type of land division proposals are subject to the requirements of this section and adds requirements for projects over a certain size. We added that, we added short subdivisions, short plots and binding site plans to Development and Subdivision section. We updated our acronyms, and then we added reference to developments over a certain size, whether it's 50 lots or five acres, they must provide base flood elevation with their application. And we are at Tomwater Municipal Code 1838-184, Flood Protection Standards. This amendment is to clarify standards for construction within specific flood zones, and we added four new subsections of requirements. So it kind of gives us minimum elevations, development needs to be... Where development must be updated, so it's a one foot above base flood elevation in A zones. It clarifies materials used should be resistant to flood damage, and construction methods shall be used to minimize flood damage. All structures, we included manufactured homes, so adding that stipulation, manufactured homes as well, shall be anchored properly. And new construction and substantial improvement of any residential structure in an unnumbered A zone where the base flood elevation isn't available shall be raised two feet above the highest adjacent grade. And then we also added regulations about an attached garage. They must be designed to allow for automatic entry and exit of floodwaters. And we have Tomwater Municipal Code 1838-270, Non-Residential Construction. This section was reformatted. It created clear standards for non-residential development. In certain flood zones, new construction and substantial improvement of commercial, industrial, or other non-residential structures shall have the lowest floor, including a basement, if they propose one, to be elevated one foot or more above the base flood elevation. And then we also added some information about unnumbered A zone, when the base flood elevation is not available, they must be two feet above the highest adjacent grade. And then we made amendments to our manufactured home section. We clarified requirements for anchoring of manufactured homes that minimize flood damage and other anchoring requirements, stating that other anchoring requirements throughout Tomwater Municipal Code 1838 are applicable. So all other anchoring requirements of our floodplain overlay ordinance also apply to manufactured homes. Our theme with this update is to really clarify, really clarifying. And then we actually have a new section, so Tomwater Municipal Code 1838-285, Detached Accessory Structures. Added standards to allow for structures to be built below base flood elevation, but only when it's used solely for parking of vehicles or limited storage. Different flood zones have different requirements for detached structures. There's size limits, elevation requirements, material specifications, limits on the items that could be limits on the items that could be stored, and anchoring requirements. It just depends on the different flood zones. And this is our second new section, which is Tomater Municipal Code 1838-325, Storage of Materials and Equipment. This section has code amendment, kind of clarifies requirements or for storing materials and equipment in flood zones. The storage or processing of materials that could be injurious to human, animal, or plant life if released due to damage from flooding is prohibited in special flood hazard areas. Storage of other material or equipment may be allowed if not subject to damage by floods and is firmly anchored to prevent flotation, readily removable from the area within the time available after flood warning.
I do have some remarks here, as you know, on this one, and I'm sure you kind of overall, you know, what kind of outreach to property owners who might be affected by this kind of language there might have been, or is that still to come? And in particular, I'm kind of interested in, do those people have anything to say about what would work for them in terms of, say, if they're storing materials, say, the city, or the county, or a state agency, or somebody else is storing construction materials or materials that they use for road maintenance or other kinds of things that are not easily movable? Do they care about, you know, it's not likely to be washed away, you know, to float away, but, you know, are there things that they want us to talk about, you know, how much they're able to store before they trigger something here? And then, I guess, just, you know, are there other situations where people are using that land that is some other way? And, you know, to just accommodate that use in a safe manner? Understand that one bit.
Yeah, those are good questions. So what I'm hearing is, how will someone know that we're updating our regulations? If they're in a flood area, like existing development, existing homes?
There may or may not already be development, maybe there's in the floodplain, maybe it's never going to have homes on it, maybe, but it is used for storage of something. And, you know, I don't know how much of that occurs within floodplanes within the city or not, but, you know, I would be interested to know if there's a threshold where, you know, say, for smaller volumes of material, we're not, we're comfortable with leaving that there, or whether we're going to disallow a larger quantity because they present a greater hazard somehow as a result of being in that floodplain when a potential flood occurs.
Yeah, like what are the specific materials?
Potentially that too, you know, maybe there's some kind of manufacturing materials, you know, either the supplies, or their waste product, or something that's for floodplain, maybe it's the Department of Transportation storing a bunch of de-icer or sand that they're going to use in large, great quantities, you know, cubic yards of fill and, you know, that kind of thing. I don't know how much of a problem that is, because I don't know how much of this land is used that way or not, but I'm just kind of curious about whether we've reached out to people to see what their thoughts are about how that's going to work for them. Something like that, I mean, it might fall under B here, because it could be moved between the time of a warning and when the event occurs. I presume it could be moved quickly. But if other stuff is so big it can't be moved, you know, like great piles of material, or say, a whole huge fleet of something, or whatever, but yeah, that's an example. Somebody's using property that way.
The fact that it can be moved, what else would trigger, is it even feasible, right? So if there's a warning, you're going to have somebody that is going to get their family, potentially you're going to have to move them out, well, I got to go move a tractor and a park somewhere, right? How do you pin that rose? So that is a consideration too, just because it can be moved, is it likely to be moved? More likely than not, there.
I mean, there might be circumstances that are like that. That I, you know, I'm just looking for, you know, maybe some good outreach to property owners who fall into what would they, or their thoughts about how this kind of a new section code would affect them?
Thank you.
That would be, you know, like ordinary people, business owners, other agencies at whatever levels. Maybe it's fairly minimal, I mean, that's a secondary question later on is, you know, how much of this can be
Yeah, I have worked with the GIS, I think it was for the Hazard Mitigation Plan to see our compliance within the NFIP, because that's part of the the Hazard Mitigation Plan approval, is being in compliance with what we're talking about right now. So I do have counts for how many commercial and residential structures approximately we have in the floodplain within city limits. That was something I was working with our map, our GIS team on. So I can follow up with some more information.
Be relevant to how this gets further tweaked, or?
Yeah, and then I'll also think, look into if, you know, there's any notification about the maps changing, the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps changing, the public notification process for that. Yeah, really, really good comments and questions. All right, and we made updates to our Tomater Municipal Code 1838-360, Floodway Standards. We are clarifying standards for projects within the floodway and state all construction shall comply with all hazard reduction provisions within this ordinance. So we clarified standards for encroachments, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements, and other development is prohibited unless certification by a registered professional engineer demonstrating development would not result in any increase in flood levels during the occurrence of base flood discharge. And clarifying that repairs, reconstruction, or improvement to a residential structure which do not increase ground floor area may be allowed, subject to outlined requirements. And we also reference other sections of the ordinance, stating what must be satisfied or allowed and what sections to. Thank you. Basically referencing other applicable code sections within this ordinance. And then we added a penalties for non-compliance section. This is new.
A quick question on the penalties here. What is the cost of imprisonment for an individual for 90 days? And the reason I ask that is, if the violation of the penalty is less expensive than what it would be to imprison that individual for 90 days, which may be unlikely, would it make more sense then to simply correct the violation of non-compliance as opposed to using those resources for imprisonment? Is that something that could be annotated? Or I guess what was the factor of 90 days of imprisonment? How serious would that violation have to be? What threshold would that aline? Not sure there's an answer here necessarily, I mean, it's just something to.
I think that's a weird, wild question to ask, because typically, for most of our regulations, it's a monetary figure, rather than imprisonment. My suggestion is the planning commission put a note in any recommendation that would, or more importantly, find an alternative.
Yeah, it's just a consideration. There may be other options or alternatives to really try to resolve the issue of non-compliance, and I don't know if imprisonment would be.
I'm not an attorney, but if I were to, like, just purely speculate, if I don't have any evidence to support this, but as far as, like, conviction, a misdemeanor of $1,000 or imprisoned for not more than 90 days, I kind of wonder if that might be just like a standard set for certain classifications of misdemeanors in Washington State, so it could be possible, though not by any means certain, that it could have been just adapted from that, that it could be just saying, this is a, well, consider it a misdemeanor, and with these misdemeanor stipulations, but I think the actual enforcement of it and possible outcomes of it are probably, I mean, I'm guessing it would probably be monetary if Brad is correct, and, you know.
He usually is.
I apologize for not remembering the source of it, because there were two things that we looked at when developing this ordinance. One was the state model ordinance. The other part that we looked at was what other jurisdictions are doing in this particular case. If I recall correctly, this section was mostly drawn from what the City of Olympia's company doing. Whether that's appropriate for us, I think is a valid question. So why not interject a note, a recommendation, or alternative justification?
Kind of related to that, I'm just wondering. I understand that we're trying to, you know, drive compliance, but how would either penalty actually correct any situation? I'd have been created.
Again, it's mostly to compel compliance, not.
Okay, so it's something onerous enough that people are not going to want to risk.
All right, that was the last amendment. Excuse me, so we actually do have our CIPA determination. It was completed December 13th, and a determination of nonsignificance was issued on December 29th, 2023. Since our CIPA has gone out, we have received some comments, some public comments. I got the public comments after this packet was created, so I will try to include that with the next packet, next time we talk about this. So yes, CIPA is complete. We had some good comments tonight, thank you. I appreciate that. And next steps, we would like to ask to put this forward for a hearing on February 13th, 2024, or alternatively, do we want to potentially have another work session?
I guess I will say I'm kind of in favor about hearing a little more about some of the issues we've raised on both Section 13 and the penalties, 15, the penalty section. I don't think they merit a whole new work session. You know, I guess seeing whether there needs to be drafting of those.
I guess my question is, as part of that process, would it be all right if staff came back with particular answers to the questions that were raised tonight? Let's also present that as part of the hearing presentation. The only reason I press in this particular case is because of the time, timing of needing to adopt this regulation. So it's something that we could pull together, as in the planning commission have the ability of the hearing to make a decision on whether or not, based on the additional information further changes, if more of the hearings continue.
And we're, I know the time is at the essence and all, but we will have a, we have one more planning commission at the end of February or to go to city council, a little bit only way if we.
Well, that allows us to extend the hearing.
I don't know, the council has its own window room if it wants it, I guess.
I'm laughing because probably.
I will refer to ordinance number 02023-017, Tomater Municipal Code 18.38.
Been moved and seconded to advance our ordinance number oh, 2023-017, Tomater Municipal Code 1838, that's the floodplain overlay for a public hearing for February 13th. Further discussion? All in favor of our motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go on to our next item, Attorney General's Advisory Memorandum on unconstitutional takings. I appreciate that you got this together as a result of their making us aware of it last time. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask if they, it looks like they got it, I was going to ask if they wanted to share the screen on it.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it's really love tonight.
So at the request of the planning commissioner at your last meeting, when we presented the memo that our city attorney prepared regarding the Attorney General's memo regarding takings and regulatory issues, that we provide a little more information, background information about that. Our intent here is to sort of walk you through their memo, not necessarily playing in great detail all the legal possibilities that exist in spite of this, because number one, we're not attorneys. Number two, however much fun this might be, if we dive into the details, we'd be here all night. And then we'd have the caveat at the very end saying it could all change tomorrow. So for our purposes. So what the state of Washington does, as a requirement of the Growth Management Act, is that they are required to provide guidance for jurisdictions that are dealing with regulations or administrative actions that have potential for creating taking. So as part of this process, I'm not going to read the entire thing. So as part of this process, I'm not going to read the entire thing, the list is called the Attorney General's Advisory Memo. The Attorney General has prepared this guidance and is, every year they take another look at it, look at the federal and the state case law, make a decision on whether or not they need to update it. Last time we did this was in 2018 after some federal cases that come down. And for this process, it's important for you to understand that number one, the city staff has a process because of this to validate any of the ordinances that we get to you or any of the discussions that we try to have, to identify particular, particular issues that, you know, before the ordinance gets to you, that are problematic, meaning that we create a situation where we could potentially create liability for the city. But the flip side is important also because I think as, as the planning commission, especially when you start to, we're starting the comprehensive plan update process and all the development code works as part of that, it's really sort of a, it's what you're doing. You need to have a good understanding of what you, what you may potentially recommend and the potential, how it fits into takings law and other things. So you don't create a challenge or create an issue where you don't intend to. So that's really the purpose of this discussion. We talked a little bit about what this does. We sort of walked through this, I'm sorry. We need to start with three different constitutional principles that, that the planning commission and the city deal with as part of our, all the regulations that we deal with, dealing with land use and development and potential policies. Those three things are police power, regulatory takings, and substantial due process. All of these things are derived, first of all, from the U.S. Constitution and in turn from the Washington State Constitution. Language between those two is close, but not exact, so there are some subtle variations between the two. Police power is probably the easiest thing to explain or easiest, you know, thing to understand. State governments by their very nature have the authority and responsibility to protect public health, safety and welfare. This is really sort of the foundation of what a state governmental sovereignty means, and from the state sovereignty is derived local power. So first of all, under the state constitution, that police power in turn is transferred or some things down to local jurisdictions. So under that is the ability to regulate or limit the use of property. And examples of this are pretty, pretty understandable, I think. First of all, abatement of a public nuisance. So if you've got a, like the situation at the brewery with the leaking chemicals, you know, we have a responsibility as the state to protect public health and require a property owner to do something and to potentially recover the cost for doing that. Terminating illegal activities, meaning you're doing something that isn't allowed for even under state or local laws. And then the establishment of building codes, safety standards, sanitary requirements, zoning regs, and environmental protections on a very broad level. So starting first with safety and sanitary requirements, that's a definite connection to public health. Building codes, we start to move a little bit farther away from public safety and health. I mean, for the most part, you, we do this because building codes say you have to have, you know, access to light. So, you know, if you have a, a living space, it must have a window. It must be of a certain size. All those kinds of things sort of fall into that broad category. Some of the zoning regulations do that, some of them go into the next, next part. The next is regulatory takings. And essentially that is when we are, government regulation of property is something that is a necessary and accepted part of modern society, and not every time that there is a decline in a piece of private property value because of regulation, that compensation is required. However, there are definite standards of when regulation can go too far and can constitute a taking of property that requires compensation to the property owner. It doesn't mean necessarily that the regulatory activity itself is unlawful, it just means it goes beyond, you know, it, it takes more value than it should, and if you're going to do that, you need to pay the property owner for that loss of that. Essentially, if there's a regulatory taking, it's based on the notion that some regulations are so severe in their impact, they're functionally equivalent to the government's exercise of eminent domain, meaning that if you, if we have a recommendation that restricts the uses on a piece of property or a section of the city to one or two uses, and that's not a floodplain or a critical area or anything else, that could be potentially considered regulatory taking because it goes too far probably. Or say for exa, as an exemption, requiring a, a large percentage of the property to be used for a public purpose. Those kinds of things are considered regulatory takings. Regulatory takings are usually under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. That's, it's all, whole section of, of legal jurisprudence that covers that. There's also the sustain of due process, which is the Fourteenth Amendment. This is more a case of if the, it's a, it's a constitution that legislation must be fair and reasonable in content and designed so that it furthers a legitimate government objective. Basically, if, and this is the assumption that there shouldn't be an unfair law, it's more than a physical taking or an imprisonment. It's when there isn't a reasonable justification or doesn't have a legitimate government objective. It goes too far. It does so in a way that impacts a set of property owners more than in others, and it, by that very nature, it, it's, it, it causes a substantial due process claim. So to withstand the claim for, that the principles of substantial due process have been violated, government actions must, number one, serve a legitimate governmental objective. This is a bit of a health, safety, welfare issue or, you know, finding for the larger good. Use must be reasonably necessary to achieve the objective, meaning it has to be tailored to the impact so it doesn't go beyond that, and it's not unduly oppressive. It doesn't carve out one set of property owners more than others in an unreasonable fashion. Under the U.S. Constitution, the taken clause and the due process clause, we, we go first with the Fifth Amendment that provides that property shall not be taken for public use without payment of just compensation. Accordingly, we can't take a piece of property for public purposes. For example, and this is a development scenario, if we, if, if an applicant comes in with a commercial application, wants to develop a piece of property, and the adjacent property is not part of that application, but the government says, well, property or A who's in for the application, you must, you must provide a road to this particular property or they can develop. If compensation is not paid, that's a, that's a taking because you're not, you're, you're not benefiting the applicant of that property, you're benefiting somebody else, and you're doing it using their property. That's probably the easiest example. It gets a little more fuzzy when, in some of the examples, and what I really recommend that you do is take a look at the, the appendix in that memo for those geeks who like to read case law and stuff. It's, it's a lot easier to understand a lot of these things when you start to see the, it applied in a particular case. And I would encourage you to, to do that, just to sort of think through, okay, this, this is a pretty obvious thing, and the government's requiring a portion of their property either temporarily or permanently, that's an obvious taking. Or the regulation does so in a way that precludes all reasonable economic use, this is what that looks like, those kinds of things. The state constitutional provisions are similar in the sense that the, their language is similar to the Fifth Amendment here in Article One, Section 16, a proper property should be taken or damaged for public or private use without just compensation. Another thing to be keeping in mind, so this would come into play when also if a development scenario, if a subdivision is being created and there were requiring a parkland to be created as part of that development. Unless there is a, a nexus between the impacts of that development, meaning that the people living on that is, are, in that development are going to create the need for this or, you know, all these things that, that rise to the level of needing this parkland to meet the needs of the people that are coming from that development. If it goes beyond that, say it's going to serve the entire community outside of just this development, that's, that's a take. That is something that goes beyond what that individual property and the impacts of that particular property. These are the warning signs that are identified in the memo. It sort of starts from the, the obvious things that we were talking about, the regulation or action results in a permanent or temporary physical occupation of private property. The famous case for this is in New York City, they required a cable box to be installed in, in a building. That in itself was a taking because it was taking a portion of that property, even if this were a very small box, without providing compensation for doing it. That's, that's that first example. The second is, there's a regulation or action deprive the owner of all economically viable uses of the property. That one's also a fairly easy one, and there's an example from the state of South Carolina in Lucas, which is a court decision. Essentially, a property owner was looking to develop a property that's right on the ocean, and the state had just passed regulations basically to preserve the beach. And in some of those cases, it precluded any development activity because of the nature of building on a beach in a hurricane area and does another reason. Well, the effect of the regulation was to not allow the property owner to do anything with the property at all. Hence, that was a taking. It was an economic related taking, not a physical taking. There are things that can happen, and this is where in Washington State, when we talk about critical areas, what is known as a reasonable use exemption. If a portion of, say for example, you've got 10 acres and you, of that 10 acres, 9.9 acres of that is wetlands, and the remaining 0.1 is buffer for that. Under Washington State law, you, the property owner is allowed to develop to a minimum extent, meaning put a single family house, the lowest level of development on a property, even though it's a critical area, even though it's in a buffer, because of the economic taking that would occur if you didn't do that. That doesn't necessarily always translate on the federal level, but we'll talk about that. The third part is a regulation or action that denies or substantially diminishes the fundamental attribute of property ownership, and this is something that we deal with less on the planning commission level, but property ownership, the fundamental things are, can you, can you transfer? That's the fundamental, either through inheritance or selling the property. Can you exclude somebody from your property? And lastly, a third, very important. There's something really great, but I just.
It'll come to you in about 10 minutes, Dr.
Anyway, excluding some of your prop, from your property, disposing of the property, selling the property as you see fit, doing all those kinds of things are a fundamental attribute of, of property. So for example, this is where things like rent control could potentially be, be considered a issue that diminishes, you know, substantially diminishes because it puts a limit on how much, or, or if you have something that says you can't turn over a property or there's sets or a set of requirements before, you know, you can transfer property in the sense, say for example, there was a manufactured home park state regulations that said you, the first thing you had to do was offer it to the tenants. So, well, that's, that in itself is a limitation on your ability to transfer ownership, which is a fundamental tenant, so that was, that was thrown out for that very reason. So again, that was sort of a broad. Does the regulation or action require a property owner to dedicate a portion of property, give grant an easement or undertake some independent financial obligation? This is, if there are things that aren't tied directly to the impact of a project, say for example, that subdivision, you need to do, you need to ride in a road in order to provide the necessary road capacity to, to do that, that's not, that doesn't rise to the level of taking because it's an impact related to development. If it is a dedication of a roadway to open up something else, or if it is, again, the park example, those are things that are all part of that. The last part is this, the regulatory action having a severe impact on the landowner's economic interest. That's a lot harder to prove for the, for the landlord to demonstrate in court. However, there are certain circumstances that, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where we unduly limit potential on property or treat a section of, of property owners in a different way than others without a reasonable connection to like health, public safety, protecting critical areas and so forth. These warning signals are all kinds of things that, that are rolling through the back of our city attorney's head whenever she reviews one of our ordinances or any, anything else that we have before creating an issue. So the review process that is established in the memo involves mostly internal things that we do, so review and distribute the advisory memo. So you, again, the city council members and the city council and the planning commission get the memo every year so you can familiarize yourself with the, with other things. Internally, we do use the warning signals to sort of say, yeah, we have a potential issue, you know, is it a real issue? We don't know, but we need to look into it further. We have our review process internally to look at that. Then we also, how do we respond to potential issues? And this is, the responding part comes in when we're dealing with permitting and conditions on permitting. Any large questions? I know that I've been going back and forth on the habitat conservation, mitigation portion of that, how, how that is, how, how this particular process informs our medication. And you brought up a really good example that I was thinking of as I was reading through this. Reason I did that is our, our HCP is based on current draft, the payment of a fee, you know, an impact fee essentially to mitigate the impacts of potential take. Payment of a fee becomes kind of tricky versus say, under the state process, for example, the requirement is presence of the species on the property. So we have a, a process, an interim process right now that essentially evaluates, requires an applicant to do a study, determine, you know, here's the parameters, how to do the study, when you have to do it in order to have the gophers at their most active period and all that kinds of stuff. If there are gophers, don't develop your property or you, you stop until an alternative is found. But if you don't have gophers, your development can proceed. We're working with, the, the federal government has a slightly different interpretation. They, they've decided that under the Endangered Species Act, that it's the presence of potential habitat, meaning soils for the gopher, that determine whether there's impact or not. So if you've got gopher soils, essentially from a federal perspective is you have gophers, whether or not you have gophers there or not, which doesn't jive with the state. Whether or not you have gophers there or not, which doesn't jive with the state regulations, which is one of the headaches and one of the things that are, is delaying us in responding to the federal comments that we received is, we're, we're trying to, sort of the circle with the two different requirements. My, the Thurston County Plan is based on soils and it's based on a payment of fee. I'm not aware of any challenges to that yet. My gut says potentially that's what we're gonna continue to do, but I'm not necessarily comfortable in saying that's the best thing. That's definitely something that we're talking about internal. It can be collected from the whole population or is the fee just? It's developed, it's collected from the person wanting to develop. But by asking that question, you bring up a very good point, which is, is, you know, is it a public, is it, is it basically requiring those property owners to bear the burden of the larger issue of the community? And that is definitely an argument that we've heard, and it's definitely something we've been discussing. And that's where, I think, when we started to look at our funding models and other things, we've also started to look at separate contributions, say from the government, the general government fund, which is citywide funds, towards, you know, the support of the HCP rather than relying entirely on funding from development. So, yes, you, you've hit on a very important issue. We're also trying to figure that. We are currently, we have a couple of consultants, we're doing a, we have a legal consultant and we have an economic consultant, they're helping. They're coming up with arguments to help us.
What is about situations that the city might take, you know, like a land use type things and something like a planned action? Where trying to meet your, your basic, apparently SEPA requirements, but maybe others too, of way ahead of time and more comprehensively rather than, you know, lot by lot or parcel by parcel. And maybe it comes back under police powers where you're allowed to at least zone that this is gonna happen and here's all that. But have we ever been questioned, or has anybody else ever been questioned about use of that, that planned action?
No, not necessarily. The planned actions are, hey, so say for example, use the port property. If the port from Newmarket wants, if ever decides they're gonna do a planned action, the reason to do a planned action ahead of time is to save time on the backend. When a developer comes in and says, I wanna do something, they don't have to go through the SEPA process and all that sort of rest. So it's a time issue. It's also, it's also a way to help quantify potential impacts ahead of time. So people understand that, okay, if I, if I have this development and I have X number of car trips, it's gonna cost me this much per car trip for mitigation. I think the planned actions are, are defensible because, first of all, they're based on particular development scenarios. Either square footage development or level of use that generate a certain amount of traffic, that generate a certain amount of impervious surface, where you can calculate the minimums and maximums based on a, the set of factors. If you would develop according with these uses and within this, you know, frame, your mitigation is covered already under SEPA. I, so I don't think there's necessarily an issue we've ever, I'm not aware of an issue with planned action being challenged, because essentially what you're doing is just sort of looking at the full range of what could happen. And if it was on the top end of the range, it would be the top end of the range, whether it's.
I guess it's in a similar way, if the city were interested in, say, government rights or like that, it would fall in the same category, right? For one thing, you're compensating the owner.
Yeah, you are paying for a bundle of, one of the bundle of property rights.
Now you can at least progress along those lines, if you know, for example, set it aside for a park or a.
But in that case, it's, you know, if we're gonna anticipate using private property for a public purpose, that's a clear. Again, I do encourage you to take a look at the state.
Yeah, it's quite a lengthy section there. I, I didn't read every one, but I was kind of picking and choosing.
Yeah.
The hour, last item on our agenda is our next meeting is. We'll have our public hearing on the flip plane later and some other stuff.
Good女士, I motion to adjourn.
Oh. I'll second. We moved and seconded to adjourn our meeting tonight. Any discussions? All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. You opposed? Adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
How many questions have you talked about, to get a wide, wide enjoyment? But the other piece, your, 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 your property ownership?
No, it's gonna lock out. There's internet connection issues.
No, it's, it's actually a really basic.